Okay, now calling me and the Carbon County Board of Commissioners and order, please rise for a moment's silence, prayer and pledge of allegiance.
Father, we place into your care all our nine-one-one staff, police officers, firefighters, and emergency medical workers. Give them courage of heart and strength of mind and body, keep them safe from harm in their daily challenges. May they know our deep gratitude for all they do in saving lives. God of all consolation, may they know your protection and peace, amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
These proceedings are being recorded for the sole purpose of preparing accurate written minutes. Recordings are overwritten following approval of the minutes, eliminating all unofficial records of these proceedings. The first item is the approval of the minutes of the previous meeting held March thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three, noting a correction to the expenditures through the general fund clearing account dated March thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three. Check numbers should be two-three-five-one-five-eight through two-three-five-two-four-four.
Motion approved. Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasowicz?
Yes.
Mr. Nochtstein?
Yes. Are there any guests concerning county business this time? Hearing none, we'll move on.
Next item is the proclamation number two thousand twenty-three dash zero-zero-four, National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, April ninth through the fifteenth, two thousand twenty-three. Need a motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt, second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasowicz?
Yes.
Mr. Nochtstein?
Yes.
Whereas emergencies can occur at any time requiring police, fire, or emergency medical services. In an emergency, most Americans depend on nine-one-one. Each day, more than half a million public safety telecommunicators answer desperate calls for help, responding with services that save the lives and property of citizens in need of assistance. And whereas the safety of our police officers, firefighters, and emergency medical services is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who telephone the Carbon County Communication Center. And whereas the Carbon County emergency dispatchers are the first and most critical contact our citizens and visitors have with emergency services. Dispatchers serve our citizens daily in countless ways. The work of these unseen first responders is invaluable in emergency situations, and each of these dedicated men and women deserves our heartfelt appreciation. Citizens and visitors of Carbon County place their trust in these individuals every day of the year. And whereas Carbon County emergency dispatchers have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment of patients. And whereas each Carbon County emergency dispatcher has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their job in the past year. Now therefore be it resolved that the Carbon County Board of Commissioners declares the week of April nine through April fifteen, two thousand twenty-three as National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. In Carbon County, in honor of the men and women whose diligence and professionalism keep our county, its citizens, and visitors safe. Adopted this sixth day of April, two thousand twenty-three by the Carbon County Board of Commissioners.
This time, Mr. Williams, would you come up and talk a little bit about your proclamation as well as your annual report?
Thank you, gentlemen, for acknowledging our dispatchers. As you well know, they're well-trained. They take a very stressful job they have.
Gary, could I ask you as a telecommunicator to hit the green button there? Oh, good. Thanks, Jason.
So I do appreciate the acknowledgement of these dispatchers. Annual report, I think one thing that will stick out for you is the call volume. As you'll see, it probably went down from one forty-four, hundred-and-forty-four thousand from twenty-one to one-hundred-and-twenty-two thousand and twenty-two. Now, we think a couple of reasons for that would be for the police have what's license plate readers in their vehicles and also J-NET. So there's not that communication anymore via phone calls. Also, I think the outreach that we have with our Carbon County Chamber of Commerce, the Carbon County GIS portal, and also our nine-in-one data hub keeps a lot of phone calls away from, because of festivals, parades, fireworks, et cetera, being called into parking problems into the center. So that's a couple of reasons we feel that helps at all. But other than that, there's, everything looks status quo from even the year before, really. A couple of projects got completed in two thousand twenty-two. If you have any questions on them? We did upgraded an upgrade, paging project for our reason, fire and EMS that got completed. And microwave hop between the nine-in-one center and our Bear Mountain Towers site. So making them basically all our tower sites now have cambiums, microwaves.
Do you want to touch briefly on all the different agencies that you handle the calls for? How many police departments, EMS, fire, street crews, state agencies, et cetera?
We deal with them all, Wayne.
I know that.
Thirteen, thirteen local police departments, we deal with all the state police, Fernridge, Pocano, Lee Heaton, Frackville even, Swiftwater with the interstates, our fishing boat commission, game commissions, all the local road crews we deal with on a daily basis, especially in the winter with snow plow, doing the roads with snow. Hickory Run Rangers, Muck Chunk Rangers, you name it.
I'll make it easy on you, Gary. We'll give the news media a copy of the.
You're the best. I have it right here. Wait, I can go to her.
I just wanted to put another thought. No, the other big question I have, and it's not in here, and I don't even know if you could provide that information, at least not today, but maybe in the future. The amount of EMD calls, the emergency medical dispatch calls and the pre-arrivals, and in particular, the amount of time that a dispatcher may be spending on a call giving pre-arrival instructions to the people that are in need, such as CPR, instructing them or other types of injuries, so.
I mean, every call, every medical call, the protocols are being followed. There are questions for even a sick person, basically if they have a flu-like symptoms, there's calls for that, how we dispatch. And what the questions are being asked. And now our dispatchers, we also are fire dispatchers, emergency fire dispatchers, and police dispatchers. So along with any fire call that comes in, they're also being questioned. For instance, a CO alarm comes in. Most people in this, when their CO alarm comes in, they're opening up the windows. Well, that's really a no-no when the fire companies get there with the meters. Because, oh, you know, if there was a problem, there's no, not a problem no more. Our dispatchers are telling, get everybody out of the house, keep the windows closed. When the fire company gets there with the readers, they're able to tell if there was a problem or not. So there's, there are questions with every, basically every call.
And the point I was getting at, some of the calls can involve how much time from the time you get the call until EMS arrives on the scene, they might be giving CPR instructions or other instructions for how long?
Could be until the ambulance gets there, yes.
Could be fifteen, twenty minutes or longer.
Correct.
Yeah, Gary, I'll make a couple of comments. First and foremost, thanks to you and the telecommunicators who really synchronize and coordinate the dispatching, you know, of first responders throughout, throughout Carbon County. I think while it's only, we had a twenty thousand call decrease, the fact is about every four minutes and twenty seconds, twenty-four-seven, calls are being answered on average. That, that's pretty incredible to be under that constant deluge of calls. And again, the length of calls is pretty notable. CCAP, the County Commissioners Association of yesterday, County Commissioners Association yesterday did host a call discussing Governor Shapiro's twenty-three, twenty-four budget and the concern with the sun setting of the nine-one-one in thirty-one January, two thousand twenty-four. And it does seem like, at least on the surface, there is a good plan to get that resolved to include the inflationary increase so that it keeps pace with inflation, really positive.
Plus, the funding would be included in that or proposed at this point in time for the suicide hotline, which is nine-eight-eight now, which is in service. And you're looking to fund it at this point in time, they're still negotiating on the different fees. And that would be a nickel per, per line, whether it's wireless, hardwire, voice over an internet or whatever. So in the fee increase, we're going to, for whatever it is offhand, it is one-sixty-five now.
It's one-sixty-five now, correct. I haven't heard, I've heard there's discussions, and it doesn't seem like it's going below two dollars right now, is what it sounds like.
Three cents of the current proposal, so five cents of that is towards the, the nine-eight-eight.
That's hope.
That's hope, yeah. And I think most of our, it's the top, it is a top priority for the CCAP because we stand to lose millions of dollars. We alone is well over a million dollars that we receive from that fund to provide services. Some of it goes to salaries, the maintenance of the towers and microwaves, et cetera. It's a big expense, so.
Yes. Yep, we bring in around one-point-five million from the Act twelve.
Yep. Oh, that would be a, a big hit if that goes away.
Yes.
Okay. Amy, any questions?
Yes. How many dispatchers do you currently have on staff?
We have twelve full-timers and four part-timers.
And how long does it take to train one telecommunicator?
It varies, but I would say up to around three months, three, four months.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Brian, any questions?
Just, I mean, how honored are you that they're going out and kind of honoring you guys this week, or next week and making us, kind of showing their appreciation?
Oh, it's, I appreciate it. I mean, I'm sure our guys up there, men and women up there appreciate this day. I mean, it's, they have a job that, you know, some, they're getting, when somebody calls nine-one-one, they're not having a good day. It's probably one of their worst days of their life that, when they call nine-one-one. And what they deal with on that daily basis, those kind of phone calls, it, it works, it works on you. So to be honored by the commissioners, I, it's a big thing for the men and women out there.
I think one of the biggest factors or stressful situations that a dispatcher gets is when it's a call of one of their own, and we've had those calls already, a dispatcher, an injured police officer, or one that has even passed, family members. And it's extremely difficult when they know the person or the person that needs the help is one of their own. And especially when it's not looking good, and a lot of times you can tell by the call when it's not good at all. So it's very stressful. We do have had to call in critical stress management to console some of the people. We've had to take people off the floor and relieve them because they are so upset because of some of the circumstances that they come across and how stressful it can be. But there's a bright side. They do deliver babies over the radio. I don't know how many we're up to now, but.
Yeah, it's, well, it's two on the board right now.
Two on the board, right. So they, they do it all, they do it. And that takes probably a, a good deal of training and patience on trying to deal with the public when they're trying to give instructions over the phone and the person on the other end is yelling, screaming, crying, carrying on, and keeping them calm so they can assist the patient, you know?
I mean, I, again, thank you, and I hope you, everybody understands the quality you guys have up there in Carbon County. They're very good dispatchers. They really are.
Yeah, and I, I just have to commend Gary also. He always brings, in fact, a couple of weeks ago, he gave up two part-timers that we gave you a full-time worker, and I always agree that we need full-time workers.
Yep.
And that's what you need, and even with the equipment, you're always giving us something that has to be updated. We're ahead of the, what we have to be.
Yeah, we, we are.
We're never behind.
No.
And that's one good thing that our nine-one-one department does bring to Carbon County residents. So thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Gary?
Thank you.
Can I call the dispatchers on our.
I will, thank you. Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Can I give Amy the report again? Is that all right?
Okay, our next item is the opening of bids for CBPG projects. The first one is Lansford Borough, street improvement, grimple wall replacement and street reconstruction as necessary fiscal year two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty. There were no bids received.
So next week, Sue Genial will have to put on air to re-advertise.
You could do it now if you'd like. It, it would save the time if the director of planning finds that, you know, he doesn't have to make any adjustments.
I'll make the motion. I have a time, son.
One second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasowicz?
Yes.
Mr. Nochtstein?
Yes.
Next one is Palmerston Borough, street improvement, reconstruct and pave railroad alleys and spilt the roads fiscal year two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty. Our first bidder is B and B Paving and Excavating, also known as Gabber Industries in Dufflin, Pennsylvania. The total amount bid, one hundred eighty-one thousand, six hundred sixty-one dollars.
There is a bid bond for ten percent.
The next bidder is Rose George Paving and Excavating out of Hookah South, Pennsylvania. The total amount bid, two hundred forty-two thousand, six hundred twelve dollars, fifty-six cents.
And there is likewise a bid for ten percent of the total bid.
Go ahead, make the motion to table for up to two weeks in order for planning and development to review the bids.
Oh, second. Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasowicz?
Yes.
Mr. Nochtstein?
Yes.
Next item is the report of executive sessions, Hal.
Hearing none.
Department reports the budget transfers for two thousand twenty-two and two thousand twenty-three.
Please to approve.
Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasowicz?
Yes.
Mr. Nochtstein?
Yes.
There are no supplemental appropriations. Expenditures, approval of check numbers, two-three-five-two-four-five through two-three-five-three-four-one. For expenditures through the general fund clearing account, totaling one million, five hundred twenty-two thousand, two hundred nine dollars and forty-eight cents.
Motion approved.
Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasowicz?
Yes.
Mr. Nochtstein?
Yes.
The treasurer's report?
Please to accept.
Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasowicz?
Yes.
Mr. Nochtstein?
Yes. At this time, I will recess our commissioners' meeting. Now calling mostly the meeting of the salary board to order.
The first item is the approval of the minutes of the salary board meeting held March second, two thousand twenty-three, and reconvened March ninth, two thousand twenty-three.
Motion approved.
Second.
Mr. Severchak?
Yes.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasowicz?
Yes.
Mr. Nochtstein?
Yes. Are there any guests concerning salary board business? Hearing none, we'll move on.
The report of executive sessions, Hal?
Hearing none.
Commissioner's office changed the rate of one assistant chief clerk office manager from twenty-seven dollars, forty-five cents per hour, a grade S seven, step K, to twenty-five dollars, forty-nine cents per hour, grade S seven, step H, effective April fifteenth, two thousand twenty-three.
Motion to change the rate?
Second.
Mr. Severchak?
Yes.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasowicz?
Yes.
Mr. Nochtstein?
Yes.
Abolish the position of one assistant chief clerk, office manager, trainee at twenty five dollars, forty nine cents per hour, grade S seven, step H, effective April fifteenth, two thousand twenty three.
Move to abolish.
Second.
Mr. Severchak?
Yes.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasevich?
Yes.
Mr. Nolstein?
Yes.
Tax assessment, change the rate of one assistant chief assessor from twenty dollars, seventy cents per hour, grade A, step F. To eighteen dollars, twenty nine cents per hour, grade A, step A, effective April seventh, two thousand twenty three.
Motion to change the rate?
Second.
Mr. Severchak?
Yes.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasevich?
Yes.
Mr. Nolstein?
Yes. Okay, meeting adjourned and we'll reconvene.
Reset, adjourn to reset, adjourn till next week.
Do you do it one time, remember? We'll recess till next week.
I will even fruit past me.
Moving recess, we'll now reconvene here.
Okay, the next item is the personnel report for county departments.
Motion approved.
Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasevich?
Yes.
Mr. Nolstein?
Yes.
The acknowledgements for courts and row offices.
Move to approve.
Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasevich?
Yes.
Mr. Nolstein?
Yes.
Correspondence was received as listed, copies will be made available to the press upon request. Advertising, for approval, authorize the advertisement of the first public hearing notice and Zoom meetings regarding the fiscal year two thousand twenty three CBBG funds. And application for entitlement and non-entitlement communities.
Move to approve.
Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasevich?
Yes.
Mr. Nolstein?
Yes.
A service agreement for approval and execution, agreement with Penn Power Group LLC doing business as Penn Power Systems of Fleetwood, Pennsylvania. To perform annual inspections on twelve county generators at various sites at a cost of four thousand one hundred fifty dollars per year. Additional charges for oil and coolant samples as well as emergency repairs. The term is April one, two thousand twenty three to March thirty first, two thousand twenty five.
Move to approve and execute.
Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasevich?
Yes.
Mr. Nolstein?
Yes.
The solicitors' report?
Thank you. For uh under used vehicles, uh seeking uh motion to adopt a resolution authorizing the disposition of uh used vehicles.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasevich?
Yes.
Mr. Nolstein?
Yes.
And uh seeking a motion to adopt a proclamation designating the month of April twenty twenty three as Pennsylvania eight one one safe digging month.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Mr. Honor?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasevich?
Yes.
Mr. Nolstein?
Yes.
And would you like for me to read that into the record?
Would you, sir?
Okay. Whereas the month of April twenty twenty three is recognized as Pennsylvania eight one one safe digging month. And the initiative sponsored by Pennsylvania eight one one, a utility notification information center with over fifty years of continuous service to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. And whereas Pennsylvania eight one one received over one million excavation notifications in twenty twenty two. And transmitted approximately six point eight million notifications to their member facility owners and operators. Allowing essential utility and construction crews to provide vital underground services and repair of critical infrastructure to communi- communities throughout Pennsylvania. And whereas, when contacting eight one one at least three business days before digging, a homeowner or contractor is connected to a unique service. That you notifies the appropriate underground utility operators in the municipality in which the work will be performed. And whereas, by notifying eight one one of their intent to dig, the homeowner or contractor is knowingly helping to protect the underground utilities themselves. The work crew and their neighbors from any unsafe digging practices within their community. And whereas, upon receiving notification from Pennsylvania eight one one, the facility owners and operators disperse to the said work site to mark the appropriate uh the approximate location of their underground utility lines. And with flags, paint or both to establish an eighteen inch tolerance zone of the outside wall or edge of their line or facility. Now therefore be it resolved that the Carbon County Board of Commissioners does hereby support the Pennsylvania Underground Utility Line Protection Law. Pennsylvania Act two eighty seven of nineteen seventy four as amended. And do hereby proclaim April twenty twenty three as Pennsylvania eight one one safe digging month. And encourage all Pennsylvanians to visit the Pennsylvania eight one one website at W W W dot P A one call dot org for information about digging safely. Adopted by the Carbon County Board of Commissioners this sixth day of April twenty twenty three.
Any further business? Commissioners reports, Mr. Honor?
Um I guess I'll give a little bit of report on our damages. At the forty four building, we're still working on that. It's uh I know it's not as extensive of what happened here. But uh the building here, the administration building, uh the base bid came in uh to do the work here at a hundred sixty one thousand, eighty two dollars. Uh there's alternate bid on that for working at night uh or on weekends depending on how we can fit it into the schedule. Uh there was uh not, there was very little damage to the furniture uh and I T equipment for approximately maybe four thousand dollars. But uh with the loss of wages that we had for sending people home, uh that came up to eighteen thousand and sixty four dollars. The estimate total of that is two hundred thirty two thousand, nine hundred fifty two dollars and twenty cents. Uh that includes an extensive renovation of ceiling tiles, flooring, uh paint, minor HVAC, electrical work. And uh this has to all go through the adjuster and P Corp, which is our insurance. And to work out if these numbers are correct before we would get payment and start on this. So we're waiting for that to try to figure out how we can do the project. And uh uh some of these things like like that added addition for that forty three thousand, we don't really know if that's what it's gonna be. I mean, that's just an estimate, but that's what they're gonna reject for us. And are we gonna have to have people coming in at night? You know, some of the things we can do during the day, but that's something we'll have to work out, you know, once, you know, once we get this all approved. The elevator, I know everybody's worried about the elevator. I think as of today, they're getting close to hooking the car up to the piston. But then it has to be inspected yet, so I'm praying for next week that it's gonna be done. But I mean, it's getting closer, but it's almost like to the point that we have to wait for the inspector because it has to be inspected before it gets in use. I don't think I have anything else. I mean, this, there's not much more to say about this building. I mean, it's a lot of money and thank God we got insurance and we have a low deductible. But I'm sure somewhere along the line, we're gonna pay for it in the future with our fee, you know, see what happens. But but I said, uh I have to credit like the adjuster and the insurance company, they've worked very well. And if something was, looked like it was wet, they were replacing it, you know, just, you know, mold's a big thing. And they were on top of it, so I have to commend both of them. And it's Crawford, uh that was the uh the adjuster that did the project here. That's it.
Mr. Lukasevich?
Yeah, two items. First and foremost, at one forty five on Tuesday, four April, the Board of Commissioners concluded the purchase of the forty five acres formerly mechanic property. That parallels Lentz Trail from the Summit Hill line to about two hundred yards uh past the the Breasted Dam. And I I would emphasize that it's a clear demonstration of our commitment to preserve uh Mopchunk Lake Park. And the outdoor recreational facility that is utilized by many county residents and and visitors alike. Uh secondly. Tuesday, April eleventh, starting at three P M in the Bureau of Elections office at forty four Sesquahanna Street. The the Board of Elections will conduct the public test of the central tabulating equipment. That's referred to as logic and accuracy uh uh testing. This testing is a series of pre-election steps intended to ensure that ballot scanners, ballot marking devices. And any component of the county certified voting system are properly configured and in good working order prior to being used in the elections. And these steps will include every protocol that the counties use in the actual election. And importantly, I'd emphasize, this will be the first time in county history that we're gonna actually live stream that uh action taking place. As a demonstration of a further commitment to transparency and increasing citizen confidence in our voting process. And particularly the technology that facilitates fair, transparent elections while maintaining the principle of secrecy of the ballot, right? Voters and choices remain private and confidential. And then lastly, want to thank the I T guys for changing the font on the meeting we'll begin shortly slide that shows. It looks really good. You know, if you haven't seen it, yeah, that's all I have.
Two quick items. Uh uh we did talk to our swissler here, Mr. Frickland, about doing a uh putting together an ordinance to implement the Act one fifty two for Blake. And in talking to Senator Argo's office this morning, uh you know, that's gonna help us to uh leverage additional funding at a pretty good amount, I hope. For by all indications to help uh the local municipalities with the uh local programs. So again, they're gonna have to have their Blake programs in place. Uh they're gonna have to do some matching. They're gonna have to step up to the plate a little bit as well. So we are moving forward, forward with it. Uh once we get an ordinance in place and our rules or anything that we would like to see. And uh I'm not, I don't have a timeline yet, but I would say say within the next couple of months, we'd be able to uh possibly implement it with the cooperation of uh the recorder at deeds, Don Gintel. So we are moving forward on that. And I did talk to one of the party annies this morning about that, that we are working on it. So and then I gotta give Abby, she is a pusher. She is out there, she wants this and that's why I'm doing it. No. She'll beat me. No, she uh very passionate about this and rightfully so. If you drive through some of the communities, it's pathetic. Some of the homes and everything and they were, some of this was left go long, too long, way too long. The other thing I wanted to bring up, the uh Carbon County Collaborative Board is having their annual human services priorities breakfast on uh Friday, the twenty first of April. Doors open at eight thirty, uh breakfast at nine and program starts at nine thirty. The uh you know, the theme is live here, work here, keep Carbon County strong. And they were, the speakers are gonna concentrate on the, focus on the issues relating to our bare, our employees or employers. Keeping and filling jobs and the impact on the community and the challenges and uh some of the things they do for retention or recruitment to for incentives. So uh we're up to about ninety people now and deadline is today. So have time, contact me, contact Cindy Lynn at AHEC. And uh try to get on that list. I'm shooting for at least a hundred people. It's about average for that program. And I know a lot of people can't make it because of other commitments, but you know, uh hopefully it'll be an enjoyable program. And this is more business related this time than it is human services. But human services provide services and without the people, they can't provide the services. So that's all I have today. We need to earn. Any, any questions?
May I just get a copy of the proclamations?
Sure. That's all. Ryan?
Just talk about how important it is to kind of alert people of call before you dig with the whole eight one one.
Well, it's uh I just saw uh Washington news this morning that Blackwana County has been a little commercial, maybe fifteen second uh commercial on uh nine one one. But it's extremely important that someone has a place to call, someone to talk to uh without getting the run run around. This most likely uh going through the call centers right now, it's uh in another county. I'm not sure what the overall plan is or how they plan on consolidating it. So uh it gets pretty hard in the smaller counties to uh fund positions. It has to go to a call center where uh you can have somebody twenty four seven, uh three sixty five. Uh available to talk to uh the people that are calling in. I better not say, I forget which county is currently doing it, but uh it is to help fund the salaries and the costs of doing that program. The three of us attended a graduation yesterday with the uh Veterans Court. Uh we had one graduate, fortunately. But a lot of those people in those programs uh have a lot of suicidal thoughts and are struggling to uh change their life around. So uh mental health, it is becoming a uh larger uh problem every day. Starts in the schools, it starts at home with young children and all the way through mental health into prison and uh uh nursing homes as well. It's a serious problem. The problems are more complex in the today's world. It's just the way it is. And trying to deal with society anymore is a peer pressure and the stress of survival is uh getting pretty serious. So uh it's an important move forward for uh opening up this uh nine one one and and getting it advertised at uh just like nine one one. And the eight one one numbers, uh something that we're gonna have to teach kids as well, not just nine one one for emergencies. Although they'll be able to refer them to the correct place and uh hopefully they'll incorporate like they do now. A call comes into Carbon County, doesn't belong to Carbon County, belongs to Monroe County, they hit a switch and automatically transfers the call to the proper call center. So uh and hopefully we'll have that in place in the near future as well, so.
Ryan, I would ask, look, an ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure, right? I try to put things in financial perspective, right? And also loss of time. One, I don't wanna strike my gas line or my electric line or any other underground utility, including water, right? Because it's an inconvenience for me, my family and my community. Likewise, when we have U G I, P P L, our local water companies responding to emergencies. Because we haven't taken two or three minutes to call before digging, they're they're taking away from other priorities, which may mean new construction. New construction means tax base increase, right? We want to get things on the book as quick as possible. So again, I highly recommend call before you dig. Don't be an inconvenience to you, your family or your community.
I would add to that, it's not only the inconvenience to those people, but the, it's putting the lives of your family. The first responders, you hit a gas line and you get a major gas leak and you have uh an ignition source of something or, you know, uh it's a, it's a hazard. You know, and how many people that just died uh recently in that chocolate factory in uh West Reading appears to be a gas leak. And uh of course, and we don't know the details or anything, but there are at least seven lives or less, so. Yeah, it's extremely important that you call before and once you hit that gas line, it could be, it could be dangerous. Biggest one I was ever responding to was a three inch high pressure line over in East Pen Township, somebody digging where they weren't supposed to be digging. And uh it disrupted uh everything from Jim Thorpe, Lee Hyten. And uh all those people were uh without gas. The gas company had to go out, shut down every furnace. Every gas line and then repair the leak and then go back to every facility, every home. And relight the furnace and purge the lines, et cetera. So it is a time consuming, expensive process for the gas companies as well as all the first responders, so. It had that happen in the middle of winter when it's about twenty degrees out, we got a problem. Because it takes days to uh reset all the furnaces and ignite them and the gas company has to do that for safety reasons, so.
Yeah, and and I I've worked construction for thirty five years. I've seen deaths happen through it. I've seen whole developments knocked out that they didn't have power for weeks. And this is, you know, and and I said, it's just like a big safety thing. I mean, uh you gotta call. I mean, it doesn't matter. Sometimes even if you're just digging a tree in your yard, you could be hitting something, you know. Anywhere that you dig that you're digging down, like know the surface, you should call. Because even some of these lines at your house or even in these developments, they might not be three foot down. They could have been put in forty years ago when there wasn't a code for that, you know, now it's like you hit something and you're gonna see a stone first or they have stuff marked. And years ago, they didn't do that. You could dig down a foot and hit a gas line. You never know. So and and I said, uh we hate to hear that. You could dig down a foot and hit a gas line. You never know. So, and, and I said, uh, we hate to hear that somebody died over something just digging, like I said, just digging a basic tree in. That can happen.
Okay. Anything else? That's it?
Okay.
Happy Easter.